Thank you very much. Kumwar, any apologies for absence?
Counselor Mike Band, please.
Thank you. Any declarations of interest?
From Counselor Henry, the Cuny interests in Hunter's Rest as her home touches the boundary of the Hunter's Rest. She will leave the chamber for the site.
Thank you. Any questions by members of the public or from members?
None.
Thank you very much. Beth, do we have any relevant updates to government guidance and legislation?
None, Chairman.
Rattling through this, aren't we? Performance against government targets.
Thank you, Chairman. Just draw your attention to the update sheet entitled Agenda Item 7, which sets out our performance against the government targets on speed and quality. And you'll note that we are meeting those targets. Thank you, Chairman.
Jolly good. Those figures continue to look good, so congratulations to your team. Right, just to note that any site inspections arising from this meeting will be held on Monday, the 3rd of December, at a time to be agreed. So we turn to the applications for consideration this evening, and the first one is Item A1, application reference WA 2018 1494, land at Northview, Plaistow Road, Dunstfold, GU84PJ. It's for the erection of a building to provide ancillary residential accommodation. And Matt is going to introduce this application. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Before we go further, I'd like to draw members' attention to page 12 of the agenda, which outlines that the council consider this to be an independent dwelling, not an ancillary dwelling, the reasons being that we consider it to be outside of the functional residential curtilage of Northview property, has its own access and is capable of being used independently. It has therefore been assessed as an independent dwelling. The location plan on the screen above you indicates the location of the site within the red line. As you can see, the access will be directly onto Plaistow Road, through the area of woodland, along the track into this area here. The yellow and black line to the south denotes the boundary between us and Chichester Borough Council. As you can see, Northview property is located to the north-west of the site with its own access here. The aerial photo on the screen indicates the position of the site, roughly speaking, coming through here and into this area of woodland. As you can see, there is extensive tree cover throughout the site. That tree area is considered to be ancient woodland, as demonstrated on the maps on the screen here. The one on the top being through the government's magic maps, with the area in brown lines to be ancient replanted woodland, and on the council's mapping software, where the lines in green indicate being a clear overlap of the two, with the proposed application to be in this area here. Officers are therefore satisfied that the area is ancient woodland as subject to Paragraph 175 of the NPPF. Turning to the block plan now, the access is already existing. There is a track that runs through the site already. That would be extended into this area here, with the proposed building in the utmost corner, with some parking provision provided in an area to be cleared. The elevations on the screen show that the proposed building would be essentially a log cabin of traditional form, the height of which would be a total of five metres to the ridge, with 2.1 metres to the eaves, have a total depth of 10.8 metres and a total length of 18.4 metres. The total site area on the block plan, to give you an idea of how much is within the ancient woodland, is 684 square metres. The proposed floor plan indicates that there would be two bedrooms, a kitchen and two bathrooms, which adds to officers' consideration that this is an independent dwelling, not an ancillary one. Photos on the site, as members would have seen on the site visit, is the track here, with the prospect of the new building being in this location here. Effectively, the scrub and the smaller trees would be felled. We have been assured that the larger trees would be retained. However, as you will see within your report, we are not objecting on the individual loss of trees, but the harm to the ancient woodland as a whole. Some more photos of the site. Again, this one here is taken from Northview in the residential curtilage, looking towards the ancient woodland, within the ancient woodland and within the access between Northview and the site. So turning to the determining issues, in the matters of principle and technical opinion are the impact on the trees in ancient woodland, as discussed, which is considered to fall within Paragraph 175 of the NPPF, biodiversity and compliance of the habitat regulations, and the impact on highway safety and parking. Matters of judgment are the location of development, the design and impact on visual amenity, the AGLV and the countryside beyond the Greenbelt, and the impact on the residential amenity of the area. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Matt. This application has public speaking, and I would invite Chris Nat to speak on behalf of the objectors. Good evening, Mr Nat. I understand the procedure has been explained to you, and you have four minutes from the point where you start speaking. Thank you.
On behalf of five objectors, we endorse officers' recommendation that permission be refused. We agree with their reasons for refusal, unsustainable development over two miles away from existing settlement areas, loss of ancient woodland and impact on biodiversity. Other material considerations include negative impact on residential amenity from vehicle noise and fumes along the track, outside lighting on the house and loss of privacy. Other considerations include setting a precedent for further development and the design incompatible with Dunstfold Village Design Statement, as noted in the parish council's objection. In July, this applicant withdrew an application for a new house on this site. There were five objectors at that stage and no supporters. The same design in the same location is now called ancillary accommodation. This is not an annex or a small building, as you've seen. For reference, it is approximately three metres longer and 1.2 metres higher than the rear of our own bungalow, which it directly faces. As officers say, it's a standalone two-bed, two-bathroom house with separate road access, parking for three cars. We fully agree with officers that it cannot be classed as ancillary. It's nowhere near the existing house, and it's certainly not subservient to it. Renaming the application ancillary is a clear attempt to subvert planning processes and create new housing by stealth. Three earlier proposals for houses elsewhere on the applicant's land at Northview have already been refused, both by council and on appeal, including proposals by this applicant and by his father before him. In May, Waverley's land availability assessment process also rejected land at Northview adjacent to this site. Objectors have highlighted the example of the affordable new homes recently approved right in Dunstfold Village Centre. By contrast, officers clearly state that there are no exceptional circumstances that make this remote site two and a half miles outside Dunstfold Village Centre suitable for housing. Approving this ancillary building would set further precedent for other houses at Northview, regardless of proximity to settlement area. As you will have seen, all sources show this site is designated ancient woodland. Officers are clear that this building would cause significant harm to woodland, and the other quote is pressure for further felling will result. This house needs excavations for foundations, water, soakaway, sewage and a septic tank, and this will impact trees well beyond those being cleared for the house and the parking. Committee may have noticed that some large trees on the site have previously been felled. Felling licence records show that this was done with a woodland improvement grant from the Forestry Commission. These grants allow selective thinning to enhance the woodland, not clearance for housing. What remains is still protected ancient woodland, regardless of the age of the regenerating trees. This building could easily be resited out of the woodland and into the garden area. Officers' recommendation to refuse aligns with Natural England's standing advice. Benefits do not outweigh the loss of ancient woodland. Surrey Wildlife Trust have twice recommended an ecology survey to assess legally protected species. The applicant has twice failed to provide one. Chichester District Council state that the site borders an SSI risk zone and protected areas for bats and dorm mice. It's also in a biodiversity opportunity area linked to Deffra's biodiversity 2020 strategy. Birds, bats and reptiles all enjoy the habitat features which are omitted from the applicant's basic checklist. Officers have given three watertight reasons why this is the wrong proposal in the wrong place. We urge committee to refuse.
Thank you, Mr Nat. I'd now invite Robert Schiller to speak in support of the application. Good evening, Mr Schiller. Again, you have four minutes from the point where you start speaking.
Okay. Thank you, councillors, for letting us speak in support of this application. We represent several, what, 13 or 14 people that have supported this application in this location. The proposed ancillary accommodation is a low-impact structure designed for the minimum impact on the surrounding areas. The applicant is not in this for funding or increasing housing supply or getting property by stealth. The objective of this is to provide an affordable housing for a member of the local community who operates the post office. We are quite happy to have any conditions allocated to the occupancy of this property as auxiliary and for the use of a local resident employed in the local parish. House prices in Waverley's rural villages are higher in the south-east average, and almost double that of the national average. So affordable housing, what do you determine is affordable housing in Waverley? The average house price in Waverley's rural areas is £484,000. Or another way of putting this, it's 13 times the average income of an individual. Small-scale developments restricted to local people from within the parish helps reinvigorate the community. The English Rural Housing Association suggested that for every pound spent in investing in local rural affordable housing provides an economic and social return of £6.50. From Waverley's adopted plan, the council has highlighted that the affordable housing position has worsened over the past 15 years, and will continue to deteriorate unless more affordable housing is provided in the local area. The new adopted plan policy, although it states that it's reason to object to this, also states when considering development proposals, the council will take positive approach that reflects the presumption in favour of sustainable development contained in the NPPF. It will always work proactively with the applicants to find solutions so proposals can be approved whenever possible and to secure developments that improves the economic, social and environmental conditions of the area. The planning department and some objectors have raised the issue of the Dunstfold ancient woodland. However, decisions should be consistent, and if you look around the surrounding properties and along Dunstfold Wood, most of them have either been redeveloped, demolished, new houses built, or had extensions put on, and they are all loosely within the ancient woodland area. The applicant's family previously owned some of this area, and after the Second World War, most of the structures were just nissen huts. The area to which this application relates is within the curtilage of the applicant's house, and he has a licence, his family's had his licence, his grandfather had a licence to coppice that wood to produce walking sticks and suchlike. As you will note, the family is also extensive woodwork carpenters and things like that, so it's a local business, and it's used for local areas. To ensure rural communities in Surrey retain their business schools and shops and services, range of housing types and tenures must be provided. And I think this application is support of a local person who's going to live in the area and die in the area. If you take post offices away from local villages across the country, you can see the village, the post office disappears, the shops disappear, the pubs disappear and the villages disappear. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Schiller. Members, Counselor Gray.
Thank you, Chairman. It's a difficult one. I think we already heard that there are some people who are considerably in favour, some against. The parish council also raised some objections, and I think it's a difficult one for members to look at here, especially with this emotion about ancient woodland, which is an important area to protect. So what I'd like to do is just to go through what I've seen, what I've gathered and what I've taken out of the officer's report. Just as background, Dunstfold covers some 1,600 hectares, of which it's estimated some 640 hectares, or 40% of it, is woodlands, much of which is ancient woodland. The site's far from isolated. There are around 15 houses around the area of the junction with Fisher Lane and Plaistow Road, and there's some further 40 houses in Derfold Wood. The estates are butting the prose site. The objectors mainly live in Derfold Wood Estate, which, as we've heard, has been carved out of the ancient woodland and was land formerly owned by the applicants. The most significant area of woodland here is further away from the site, and it's the residual designated Derfold Wood area. You could just put the, that's it. So it's up towards the left there, and it's a specially designated area and described as Derfold Wood. The officers are not objecting on the grounds of any loss of amenity to neighbours. The site is on replanted ancient woodlands, which for some time has been coppiced and worked, as we've heard, partly for the purpose of making walking sticks and also for other woodworking activities. There's no intention to fell any of the substantial trees, and care's been taken to fit the proposed log cabin into the site to cause minimum damage. The clearing will be solely of coppiced trees, and most applicants would have actually cleared the site before we visited, but we note that this applicant hasn't. So it says something for the genuineness of this application. The log cabin will have a low impact on the site and is a permanent home of high standard. The site is not isolated, and the style and quality is in keeping with the wood it's surrounded. And I don't believe that the Dunstfold Design Statement would be applicable to this particular setting. The officers have said the application would have significant detrimental impact on trees, in part because it would likely to lead to further pressure to fell, and in part because the access would require significant upgrading, which would have a detrimental impact on adjacent to yous. I believe they could both be addressed by conditions. The applicant has also very specifically said they don't intend to fell any of the trees. The applicant has been deemed valid by the council, although it doesn't contain an ecological report. The officer's report said the applicant has not demonstrated that there would not be resulting harm to legally protected species. It should be noted that the site has been regularly coppiced and would deter the species being referred to. There's a considerable area of similar habitat around the site, which has not been worked for protected species to reside in. Dulstfold is looking for some hundred houses in the local plan, a 43% increase on the settlement. The settlement only occupies some 12 hectares within the parish, out of the 1,600, and in a recent neighbourhood plan survey, there was a very strong preference for houses to be spread around the parish. Not only will this application help achieve the numbers with the emerging local plan, it will support a rural need for a key village worker. NPPF 77 encourages decisions which are responsive to local needs, and to some extent, this is a rural exception site, providing an affordable property that we desperately need. And that can be also covered, I would have thought, in conditions with a covenant. There's a very modest property here consisting, it's costing probably around £50,000. There's no way any other house would be affordable in that respect to the potential applicant, and which, if erected, would have a minimal impact on the environment. It's not isolated. I would suggest it's less than substantial harm, but the conditions, if this council was, this committee was minded to approve, could be imposing conditions for ecological surveys, for TPOs, for covenants on the site and restrictions on any extension to the building. Thank you for listening to me, Mr Chairman.
Thank you. Counselor Goodridge.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I thought the site visit was very helpful because it really put in context where the application site is in conjunction with the other dwellings that are in the neighbourhood. I have to say that I agree with the officers' recommendation, as I hear things at the moment. I do think firstly that this building would be independent and is not ancillary. I'm not quite sure what it's meant to be ancillary to. There's a large amount of space between Northview and this site, a large expanse of lawn, and as we saw from the plans, has everything in it that you would need for an independent dwelling, with two bedrooms and two bathrooms, kitchen, etc. So I agree entirely that I don't know what it's meant to be ancillary to, and therefore it seems to me that, for example, Paragraph 79 of the NPPF, I think it's isolated as well, in the general context of Dunstfold. And as it is isolated, one's then looking, see if there's circumstances that apply in Paragraph 79, and I can't see any of those that would apply. I don't think this is sustainable, so far as providing accommodation for a postmistress. It says in the report, the nearest centre is Plaistow, which is two and a half miles away, and I think my car told me it was about three miles from the middle of Dunstfold, roughly. Whether it's two or three miles, it isn't in the centre of Dunstfold where the post office is, and I think there must be far more sustainable places for a postmistress to be. So unless I hear anything that changes my mind, I feel quite strongly at the moment that the officer's report is quite right, and for the reasons. And it's a pity we can't put in a reason for highways, because I know there's an existing access way which is hardly ever used, but when we walked out of the site and looked to our right, I must say, the traffic was going quite fast before it came to that bend. Then they saw us walking up the side of the road, they slowed down like mad. But if there weren't any pedestrians about, I suspect people who know the road would go round that corner pretty fast. But highways, I have not raised any objections, so we can't add that, but as an aside, I slightly question the highway authority.
Thank you. Counselor Townsend.
Thank you, Chairman. Whilst I appreciate very much the problem of affordable housing and affordability within Dunstfold, this is basically a house being built adjacent to and on ancient woodland. And as with the later application, specifically with regard to protected species, Circular 06205 states it is essential that the presence of otherwise protected species, this refers to another application later on, and the extent that they may be affected by the proposed development is established before planning permission is granted. I'm very concerned that the ecological report, that there isn't any ecology report, and whilst I appreciate that the land may be coppiced, coppiced is a very, very different and not an intrusive way of dealing with trees and the biodiversity surrounding the ancient woodland. Going in and adding a house and the lighting for that house and the hard standing for vehicles and traffic, etc., would have a detrimental effect on the ancient woodland, which is protected, highly protected under the NPPF. So at the moment, I feel that I would support the officers' recommendation for refusal. Thank you.
Counselor Henry.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, I was very grateful to go on the site visit the other day. Thank you for organising that. I think all of us that live in the villages are sympathetic towards finding accommodation for our rural workers, particularly key people, who are always going to have problems getting on the housing ladder. And this is a very emotive issue. However, we can't get away from the fact that this is a totally self-contained unit. It is not ancillary in any way to Northview, and for that reason, I can't progress this application further. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Voracevsky.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm actually surprised that this has actually come to committee, and I don't actually think it is a difficult one for members. The letters of support expressing, sorry, the letters of support expressing support for the application, whilst I have great empathy based on what's been said before us, none of which are placed on material planning considerations. I actually think this is going to, if it was granted, which obviously officers have made the right decision here not to grant, it sets a very dangerous precedence. And whilst I have great sympathy for rural workers, there's many of them who need affordable accommodation, but this to me is simply in the wrong place, and it's not sustainable. So I'm really surprised, as I say, that it's actually come to committee, whilst I have great empathy and great understanding for the need to affordable housing. I just find it very difficult to find any reason why I would want to support this based on policy alone, and I think the officer's recommendation is wholly right. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Anybody else like to comment before we move to the recommendation? In that case, the recommendation is that permission be refused for the reasons one to three and informatives one and two as set out in the report. Can I have all those who support that recommendation, please? And against? Abstention? So that permission is refused on that application. We move on to Item A2, which is application reference WA oblique 2018 oblique 1401. We give people an opportunity to leave if they so desire. Right, yes, Application A2, Item A2, application reference WA 2018 1401, Hunter's Rest, the Green, U-Hurst, GU67RT, and the proposal is for an outline application for the erection of two dwellings and garages, following the demolition of existing dwelling and garage with all matters reserved. And again, Matt will introduce this item. Matt?
Thank you, Chairman. The application site, as shown on the location plan, is positioned to the rear of a number of dwellings, and consists of a large parcel of land with a detached bungalow and garages on it. The adjacent conservation area snakes around the site, roughly where my mouse is, which is the U-Hurst Green Conservation Area. The aerial photo here shows the extent of trees on the site, which is covered by a blanket TPO order. Whilst this is the case, we have consulted with the council's tree and landscape officer, who is satisfied that there is enough room on the site for two units to be constructed. The indicative block plan, which has been submitted, shows an access, using the existing access, however, this matter is reserved, and two units within the site. Should be noted that Plot 1 here would not be outside of the RPA's root protection areas of trees subject to the areas of trees subject to the TPO order and would need to be moved. However, officers consider that this could be done later at a reserve matters stage, given that all matters are reserved. So the photographs of the site, we have the existing bungalow on three of the pictures with the garage here. As you can see, it is of low architectural merit, so there is no objection to its loss, and there is extensive tree coverage, including a rather fine oak tree in the garden, as well as trees around the edge. However, as stated, we do not have any objection on trees. So in terms of the determining issues, for the matters of principle and technical opinion, as the principle of development, as stated, we are satisfied that the site being the countryside beyond the green belt and within the rural settlement boundary can sustain two new dwellings, a net gain of one, and the biodiversity and compliance of the habitats regs. The matters of judgment are the impact on the countryside beyond the green belt, the impact on the visual amenity, including the impact on the adjacent conservation area and the impact on the residential amenity. However, members should be advised that these would require further consideration at a reserve matters stage in the future. Thank you very much, Chairman.
Thank you, Matt. Again, we have public speaking, and I would invite Mrs Gwen Warby to speak on behalf of the objectors.
I speak on behalf of myself and the other objectors to this application. The proposed development of two overly large, two or possibly two and a half storey dwellings would be out of place and completely out of character in the surrounding environment, and because of their scale and size and positioning on the site, be dominant and overpowering in the existing landscape. Several dwellings immediately adjacent to the site are cottage-style buildings of relatively low elevation. The situation would be further compounded by the site being on more elevated land than surrounding properties. There would be a greatly impacting loss of privacy to all surrounding properties, and in the case of my own property and lilac tree cottage, total loss of privacy to all rear-facing rooms and established external seating areas. The proposed felling of a large and mature tree which currently provides screening from the existing dwelling and which carries a TPO put in place after due consideration by Waverley Borough Council only five years ago, purely to facilitate the erection of much larger properties, would have even more impact on the loss of privacy to neighbouring properties. The height and scale of the proposed dwellings would cause loss of light to neighbouring properties, and the proposal to plant replacement trees right on the boundaries would result in overhang into those neighbouring properties and further loss of light. There is restricted single-track access to the site, which could impede access by emergency vehicles. The only way to improve access to accommodate the increased number of vehicles associated with such large properties would involve the felling of more mature trees, which are also covered by TPOs. While understanding that it is not a matter for consideration by this committee, I would mention that there is an enduring covenant restricting development on this site. Taking into consideration the detrimental impact on the environment and on the residents of existing neighbouring properties on three adjacent sides, we trust that the committee will appreciate the unsuitability of this application and refuse permission. Smaller possible single-story dwellings and the retention of existing TPO-covered trees would be wholly more appropriate. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now I'd invite councillor Ian Davis to speak on behalf of the parish. Evening, Mr Davis.
My name is Ian Davis and I'm vice-chair of planning matters at Uhurst Parish Council. It has been explained that this application is in outline only with all matters, including design and access, reserved for consideration at a later stage. On that basis, the applicant has provided no details of the height, bulk, massing and appearance of the proposal, and even the sighting as shown on the block plan is indicative only. The application is here to test the principle of whether two substantial houses can be accommodated on the site without impact upon the determining issues. The major constraints here are the existence of a blanket tree preservation order, together with the proximity to and any impacts upon the Uhurst Green Conservation Area, which adjoins the entire eastern boundary of the site. We find it very difficult to understand how officers, including the council's heritage officer, can assess any impacts upon the conservation area, given that no detail, indicative or otherwise, is provided regarding the height, style or appearance of the proposed new houses. Officers will find inappropriate development very difficult to resist at the reserve matters stage, with no point of reference to their conclusion that the principle can be accommodated. In a sensitive location such as this, illustrative plans showing much greater detail should have been requested from the applicant. How the heritage officer could have confidently concluded that there will be no resulting harm to the conservation area is beyond our comprehension. We're all being asked to use our imagination as to how the replacement of a modest, low-level bungalow, less than five metres to its ridge, can be replaced with two five-bedroomed houses more than twice that height without harming the conservation area. I find that difficult. Officers identify that there will be poor natural daylight to plot one, caused by the dense tree cover to the western boundary, where all the trees are subject to TPOs. They propose that this could be overcome by positioning plot one to the south-west. I ask you to look carefully at the indicative layer and satisfy yourselves that this strategy could work. I don't think it will. At no point in the report before you this evening is there mention of impact upon a listed building. It is not even given as a determining issue on page twenty-four of the report. Broadstone Cottage is a mid-sixteenth-century timber-framed cottage adjoining the southern boundary of the development site. It is listed grade two. It is an important heritage asset in its own right. There has been no assessment either by officers or the heritage officer as to the impact of the development upon the setting of this heritage asset. Expert opinion on the degree of harm caused, whether it be less than substantial or substantial, is not available this evening, either from officers or from the applicant. It cannot be put in the planning balance that you're asked to perform this evening because there is no evidence one way or the other. In any case, with no design intent available to us, we cannot even take an informed view on the night. With these important issues outstanding and the lack of detail available within the application, it will be very difficult for you to reliably decide the application this evening. I respectfully suggest that you either refuse or defer the application until such time as you can. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr Davis. councillor Deane.
Thank you, Chair. I'm grateful for Gwen Warby and Ian Davis for their views tonight. This is always very difficult when it's all matters reserved. You know, I mean fortunately we had a site visit, so at least we could have a visual view of the plot, but when all matters are reserved, many of the questions that have been raised tonight are correct. We don't know what the size of the buildings, are they going to be one, two, three story? We're not sure exactly the location they will be, which does make it quite difficult. The TPOs in place, I can assure people if they are TPOs in place, we do take that very seriously. So should this be supported and then further plans come in which look to remove trees and that are ancient, and we will be very unhappy about that, to say the least. It's a very difficult one to decide when it's so little information, but that is the right of the applicant to do that. Whether we like it or not, they can put this type of application in. And I suppose the question for colleagues is, having viewed the size of the plot and what they visually see, do they think that plot is suitable? I would be really interested to hear my other colleagues' views, but say, I am concerned, but actually we have to make a decision on, is that plot suitable to have two homes that we're not hundred per cent sure on the size? The only thing I will say is, I think if we're minded to give permission, I think the developers should know the concerns that we have or have been raised about the size, the mass and the bulk, the location, where they are going to be. I think they should be notified of those concerns, and especially about concerns about tree preservations and TPOs. But I look forward to my colleagues' views as well.
Thank you. councillor Goodrich.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Again, the site visit was very helpful. Bearing in mind, we are here to decide whether this site is suitable for two dwellings. Mention is made, and it's a question which I appreciate the officers' answer to when I've finished, a mention is made by the parish council that there's going to be two large five-bedroom detached homes. Now, I know they're going to be detached, but does the application actually say it's going to be two large five-bedroomed houses or just two dwellings? Because I think what we have to consider is whether two dwellings are suitable on this site, whether there's enough room for it. I agree entirely that no building should be put up which would involve any trees that have got TPOs on them or of any screening value should be felled. That is quite right. And of course, the sighting at the moment is indicative, and as has been made clear to us, that is not set in tablets of stone as yet as to where they would go exactly. They could be moved sideways, downwards or whatever. So on the basis of principle, bearing in mind that there's a property which in old-fashioned terms is backland development, but there's, looking at the sizes of the plots of houses around it and so on, it does seem to me that this site is large enough to take two dwellings and that erection of two dwellings that preserve the trees is possible. And clearly, when this matter, if we grant permission and if it comes back with the details, we will be looking at it very critically for all the factors, particularly those raised by the objectors, because then we can test whether or not it's acceptable when we have all the details. It is difficult to decide in principle with very little information, which is what the application's about, but having looked at the site, I am satisfied you could get two dwellings on this site. Whether it's meant to be large five-bedroomed properties is, I'm not sure, but I'd be grateful to know whether these five-bedroomed large properties is what the application says. Thank you.
Thank you. Page twenty-one of our report says that the application indicates that these would be five-bed or of similar size, so presumably that five-bed or similar size has come from the applicant. Yes, Matt, did you wish to add to that?
Yes, the application form submitted is four plus, is the box that they have ticked. There is no higher figure on that form. So they could be four, they could be five or more.
councillor Stuart Stenit.
Thank you, Chairman. I find this an impossible situation. Yes, the site is big enough for two bungalows, which the access to go with that would, common sense would tell you that would be fine. Once we give permission for two houses, it's going to go as large as possible, and I don't think it's possible, and I don't think it's either fair to judge from where we are sitting at this moment in time on that, to answer that. Five-bedroomed houses, four-bedroomed houses, they're going to be 4,000 square feet, however, they're going to be very large. The ridge height of that current house is no more than five metres, and you're going to go to probably sixteen metres ridge height, which is going to be pretty big. And five-bedroomed houses are going to have probably three cars a house, that's six cars going in and out. I'm not against development in that area. I think it's capable of taking two houses, but for my opinion, I need more detail, otherwise I'm afraid I can't support what the officers are recommending. I'm just sorry, there's not enough information. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Voracewski.
Thank you, Chairman. I actually share some of the sentiment there of what councillor Stenit has just said, because I think what we've been asked to do this evening is to establish the principle of development, and in doing so means then they've got to come back with an application in its entirety. If we're looking, what I have a problem with here is, if we're looking at strategic sites, I understand why in the first instance you would want to look at establishing the principle of development, but when it's for two and it's already been noted in the report, and we could make a decision on this this evening based on judgment, why not come in with a full application at this stage so we can make that decision? Because I think there are so many unknowns. There's a saving grace that they've actually suggested two, but what if a viability assessment comes back and says, well, actually, we can't do two, we need to do four? Is that going to throw the cat amongst the pigeons again? So I think there was a reference made to this application, perhaps being deferred because, like councillor Stenit, I'm not opposed to the principle of the development, but I can't make the decision because I don't feel we have enough information and it might come back looking very different. So there was a suggestion made earlier that this should be deferred, and rather than wasting time and coming back with an application or this being refused this evening or whatever. It may be that if what officers are saying and what the report says and what the developer is saying, that, you know, let's come back with a full application so we can make a decision on its entirety, rather than establishing something now and then having to look at the application, which could be completely different when it comes back to us. Because I think once that established principle of development has been agreed, there's no going back on it, and if it comes down to viability, I think then we have to take other factors into consideration. As it stands at the moment, I couldn't support the decision, but I could support a deferral, and I wouldn't be able to support the officer's decision because I just don't feel I have sufficient information to make that decision in the best interest of the residents of Uhurst. Thank you for listening, Chairman.
Thank you. I suspect that the officers will tell us that we can't actually defer an outline application and insist on more details, but I'll let the officers speak for themselves.
Thank you, Chairman. I agree, I mean it is difficult without the detail. They are entitled to make this application for an imprinciple permission with details to come in at a later date. So really, what we're looking at is whether or not you think that the site could accommodate two four-plus-bed dwellings, and thinking about in terms of design, whether or not the site could comfortably accommodate those with the constraints that exist on the site. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. So just to be clear, would it be possible to defer this application for more detail? councillor Voracewski, you wish to come back?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman, and thank you for allowing me to come back. Thank you, that's helpful. But it says a minimum. So it comes back to my point again, that once the principle has been established, there's at least a minimum, and if a viability assessment is carried out, and all the other things that they would need to do to make this possible, it may be that two aren't viable. So as I say, I sit less comfortable now in making that decision than I did before in favour of saying, I'm sorry, I would rather see a deferral and a full application so I can make an informed decision with all the information before me. And I think they're capable of doing that as well, and it saves time and it saves money and it stops, I don't know how, you know, I'm interested to listen to what other members have to say this evening, but I wouldn't want to come back again, I wouldn't want to see it refused.
it refused tonight, and then come back again at a later stage. So I think a deferral is probably an option at this stage. Thank you.
Thank you. The application is for the erection of two dwellings and garages, it's not a minimum of two dwellings, it's just, the erection of two dwellings, that's what we would be granting outline permission for.
But how, when we're asked to establish the principle of development this evening, with that as potential, but that's not guaranteed? We're being asked to establish the principle of development?
We've been asked to establish the principle of the development of two dwellings and garages. If they want to put three, or four, or 10 on there, they'd have to come back with a completely new application.
Chairman, I understand what you're saying, but I've also sat on planning committees for a long time.
Okay. councillor Townsend.
Thank you. I have to agree with councillor Voracewski. Once the principle of development is established on the site, then I know that they can come back for another application, but then the wait would be given for the fact that you had given permission for two dwellings already. However, knowing the size of these dwellings, four-plus bedrooms, so we're looking at four to five bedrooms perhaps, I can't see how those houses, from councillor Stenit saying roughly the size of them, could fit on that site and not impact the root protection areas of the trees, or the trees themselves. It is quite a constrained site with the trees, and I don't think there's enough information provided, and it is really, really disappointing that the applicant hasn't come to us for full permission, and whilst I totally appreciate that they can do this, it is very disappointing. And at this moment in time, based on the fact that I have to give my judgment, can I think that these five-bedroom dwellings could fit on this particular site without severe damage to the trees? And with the very scant information that we have, I'm afraid I would not be able to support this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Lewis, did you wish to contribute?
Thank you, Chairman. Just really in response to the question as to whether or not the committee can defer making a decision this evening, my view is that the committee can choose to defer if they want to, however, what's important to consider are the risks associated in doing that, and choosing to defer primarily because members consider that insufficient information has been provided. The risks obviously associated are that the applicant appeals for non-determination, and it then goes to an appeal inspector to determine the potential costs associated with that, not only in either defending the appeal, or being represented at the appeal, but also in terms of a cost award being made against the council. I think the point to note is that the application has been validated, and so therefore, a sufficient amount of information has been provided, from a technical point of view, for those validation requirements, and so members should be able to determine the application one way or the other, I would suggest. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. I'll go to councillor Gray first, if I may, because he's been waiting some time. councillor Gray.
Thank you. Really, just now, I'm in support of my colleagues that are talking about it. I thank for officers to confirm that we are actually talking about four-plus bedrooms, that's what we're talking, so we're talking about two houses, four-plus bedrooms, we don't know what facilities they're going to have, how high they're going to be, or anything else, and we're asked to say, will we agree to this? And is it possible to put them on that site? I think that's an impossible situation. If that's what we're being asked to do, then I'm minded to vote against this. If we defer it, and it goes to appeal, then I don't see very much difference, I would also support a deferment. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Voracewski, you wish to come back again?
Thank you, and thank you for your indulgence, it's much appreciated. On that basis, I would like to propose that we defer this, because I accept wholeheartedly and respect what our legal team has suggested, but instead of worrying about the prospect of non-determination within the period of time, I would like to see it as a goodwill gesture, and an opportunity for them to come back to this council and say to us, this is what I've got, and this is what you're making a decision on. And I don't think it's too much to ask, because I think that would send out a good message that developers, residents, parish councils, and members in this community, in this chamber, are all working proactively together for the right conclusion, and not waste time. Because if this gets deferred, if this gets refused tonight, who knows how anyone's going to vote? You know, we're going to come back anyway. And also, on the points of, you know, for me, as I say, it's flats for the future, so whilst everybody's got this two-bedroom, we've got to think about the future, and what it possibly means to that actual site, because once we've established that principle of development, we don't know what's going to happen into the future. So I think as a goodwill gesture, an opportunity to do it and get it right, and make one decision, with all the information in front of us, I would suggest we defer.
Is that a proposal? Do you have a second? Several. Okay, councillor Gray. Members, the proposal is that we defer this application and request more information from the applicant. Beth, you'd like to speak first, before we vote?
Sorry, Chairman, thank you. If members were minded to defer this application, I would suggest that we would, following that, seek to negotiate with the applicant in terms of maybe reducing the number of bedrooms, and potentially therefore the size of the dwellings themselves. It's open for members to do that as well. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. I mean, there's a block plan in the report that obviously shows all the trees, so I wouldn't think it was beyond the wit of man for them to come up with an indicative block plan that was a bit more definite than the one they've given us. Anyway, we have a proposal that this application be deferred pending more detail, proposed by councillor Voracewski, seconded by councillor Gray. All those in favour of deferring this application?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10.
And against? One? Any abstentions? No, so that application is deferred. Oh, Flipping Hunt Cottage again, isn't it? Yeah, okay. Let's see him sitting there. Maybe there's a... Yes, hi, the parish council. So, members, the next item is item A3, application reference WA 2018 1521, Hunt Cottage, Hambledon Road, Hyde Street, GU84DE, and the proposal is for alterations to elevations. Anne-Marie is going to introduce this application.
Thank you, Chair. The proposal is for alterations to elevations. This is the location plan. The site is located to the east of Hyde Street Crossroads, and set back from Hambledon Road. The block plan here indicates the location of the two-story side extension which has been built. These are the site photographs. It shows the front elevation as built, with the dormer window, and the neighbouring dormer window. Again here, this is the dormer window in question. These are the proposed elevations. So permission is sought for alterations to the dormer in comparison to a previously approved scheme. This dormer is 0.7 metres deeper than previously approved, and it has hanging tiles, the same as the front gable, and a hipped roof, as opposed to a gable roof, which matches that of the dormer on the neighbouring property. It is also proposed to install French doors to the rear elevation. These are the floor plans, and this shows comparison with the previous scheme. Apologies, it's not particularly clear, but this is the previously approved dormer, and this is the dormer we're now considering as built on-site. The determining issues, matters of principle and technical opinion are the impact of the green belt, impact on residential amenity, effect on the SPA, and biodiversity and compliance with the habitat regulations. Matters of judgment in this case are impact to the non-designated heritage asset, and design and impact on visual amenity, including the AOMB and AGLV.
Public speaking, I would invite Mr Graves to speak on behalf of the objectors. Good evening, Mr Graves, I'm sure you know the routine by now, four minutes from when you start speaking.
Good evening, Mr Chairman and councillors, my name is John Graves, and I'm speaking on behalf of the residents of Hyde Street Crossroads. I live in kennel house, which is directly behind Hunt Cottage, in which itself started life in 1884 as the dog kennels, when our group of buildings were designed by Ralph Neville for the Chillingfold Hunt. You are being asked to decide this retrospective application on the basis of an officer report, which in order to be scrupulously fair to the applicant, is written as if the dormer window in question has not yet been built. This report also omits a lot of the very relevant previous planning history. You should be aware that one of the reasons that your enforcement officers were unable to do anything to stop this dormer being built, was that they had no large-scale drawings to compare it with, and therefore nothing to base an order on. These detailed drawings were a condition of the previous application, they were never supplied, and despite this, the condition had still been discharged. We, the neighbours, cannot pretend it is yet to be built, as we see the dormer, and to a lesser extent, the UPVC French window every day. I hope that you have seen rather better photographs with some close-up of this dormer, not only to compare it with its twin, but also because the new elevation drawings are so lacking in detail that they really do not do it justice. In reality, it is very different to both the drawing and the one on Ryecroft next door. Do not be distracted by the pretty tile hanging on the apron. It is this very apron which is not only contrary to Waverley guidance, but also completely wrong on this Arts and Crafts building. It must not be viewed in isolation when this symmetrical pair of cottages already has six other dormers, all of which are exactly the same style with no aprons. In planning terms, this one does cause harm. Concerning Waverley guidance for dormers, I have been into your planning department and asked what the rules are. I has even given a printout of the SPD, and told that it is entirely current and up-to-date. I'm afraid it doesn't give much confidence in your planning department when your officer recommends that you overrule your own guidance. I should like to conclude by reading part of the letter from another neighbour. I think this sums up very well the feelings of the majority of local residents, who ultimately are the people that Waverley is answerable to. This letter begins, "At no stage during the prolonged planning process relating to this property have we sought to obstruct the applicant's reasonable desire to improve and enlarge this property. What we have objected to as a material planning issue is the nature of the proposals, and particularly in relation to the frontal appearance of the property." It goes on and then concludes, "If this application is granted, it is development by stealth. Get permission for one thing, ignore it, build something quite different, and when found out, apply for retrospective permission. In order to have confidence in Waverley planners and the fair and reasonable enforcement of agreed planning conditions, would we urge that this application be rejected?" Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Graves. And now invite councillor Philippa English to speak on behalf of the parish council. Good evening, councillor English.
Good evening, my name is Philippa English, and I'm speaking on behalf of Buzzbridge Parish Council. This application is for a French door to the rear of, and a dormer window at the front of Hunt Cottage at Hyde Street Crossroads. We have no objection to the French door, but would comment that it's a pity it is UPVC, rather than would to match the other windows on this historic Ralph Neville cottage. However, we do object to the dormer on the front elevation. Whilst looking relatively innocuous on the elevation drawings, in reality, it is completely different in style and size to the six other matching dormers on the building. In isolation, it may look pretty enough, but here, the architectural precedent has already been set, and this dormer, built to maximise floor space, is completely out of keeping. The officer report, written as if the dormer is yet to be built, acknowledges that the dormer does reduce the symmetry of the building, and does cause some harm as a result. It does not mention that symmetry was an important feature of Ralph Neville's designs. The report continues that the dormer remains subservient, but to what? The extension is subservient to the rest of the building, but this application is only concerned with the dormer, not the whole extension. Therefore, the only thing that the dormer could be subservient to is the other existing front dormer, to which it certainly is not, as it is much taller. The report also goes on to say that the dormer would not meet all of Waverley guidelines. This is also a massive understatement of the supplementary planning document. To quote from the SDP, "To ensure maximum light is obtained and to minimise the effect of the bulk, the entirety of the front face should be glazed. Use of excessive cladding of any material will not be acceptable." At Hunt Cottage, nearly half the front of this dormer consists of the so-called apron, eight tiles high, as against the 12 tiles high window. This is excessive. It goes on, "The style and the size of windows should reflect the existing windows in the main house, albeit that a smaller size is more appropriate to the subordinate role of the roof. In reality, this is the complete opposite. It is bigger, louder, and different." Again, it says, "Dormer windows should be set down from the roof line and up from the eaves line. This one is built up from the original eaves line to achieve maximum floor space inside, and an eaves overhang then built to disguise this fact." The dormer guidance then concludes with guidance on flat roofs, the only aspect not applicable to this dormer window. It would therefore be more accurate for your officer report to have said that, other than not having a flat roof, this dormer does not comply with any WBC guidance. Report's comments on design continue to repeat the understatement that the dormer does not meet with all Waverley guidelines, and adds that it would meet the need for extensions to be subservient. If this is supposed to mean that the dormer will not affect the subservience of the existing extension, then this is simply wrong. This dormer, being different and eye-catching with its pattern tile apron, is certainly not subservient. In summary, the report says that the application must be judged against the development plan and the SPD. On this basis, and given that we are expected and to pretend that this dormer has not yet been built, the importance of the SPD cannot be overstated. This application, as well as being about what is appropriate for this building, is all about design and detail, and the SPD is the only document available to you which addresses these issues specifically in relation to dormer windows. All the relevant guidance it gives has been completely ignored, and so you should either reject this application or rewrite the SPD. In our parish, we are becoming increasingly concerned at the growing number of enforcement issues that are arising by people either evading the principle of planning law, or by simply ignoring planning conditions. The officer's recommendations that this application be passed is a prime example of defensive planning, where a concern at the possibility of an appeal wins over what has been written in guidance. For the sake of Hunt Cottage and Waverley's planning reputation, you should follow your own previous advice to our officers, and to be robust. Thank you.
Now, I'd invite Mrs Faye Sharp to speak in support of the application.
Thank you, gentlemen and ladies. Firstly, I'm at a bit of a loss to understand why this minor amendment on approved planning permission to Hunt Cottage has been called in. Throughout this process, I've worked closely with the planning department to complete this project, retaining the attractiveness and the heritage of the cottage, and at all points, I've provided drawings as required and requested by planning, unlike the previous gentleman just said. I'd like to remind councillors that previously, there was a flat roof extension which was falling away from the property, and this process has now taken over a year to actually complete, allowing housing stock that could be used empty, whilst my neighbours make it as difficult as possible for me to complete this extension. My neighbours unfortunately have actively hindered the process of building by obstructing access, disagreeing about boundaries, causing this build to take twice as long as it should. They've been hell-bent on disrupting me, but they have been happy, or would have been happy, for allow the build to be overhand, i.e. happy, for allow the build to be overhand, i.e. without scaffolding, which would have been a complete eyesore on the side of my property. It was only through legal intervention that I was able to assert my ownership of the fence around the property, and through protracted legal discussions was enabled to put scaffolding up and actually build the building properly. I note from the eight letters, there are two from parish councillors who are actually also neighbours and also object, one from the venue that the parish council hold their meeting in, and one also from a parish councillor who is here as a neighbour as well. And I believe that there's been influence that is inappropriate, and have raised a complaint to Waverley Monitoring. Many objections use the same information and pictures which have been used in a coordinated fashion by the parish council and Mr Graves and Miss English. Regarding comments, most of them are not relevant to the actual planning approved. Symmetry is a key point, and other comments. They should note that Rycroft's larger extension with plastic guttering and also PVC-style patio doors to the rear, also has a twenty-five-foot barn garage in the front garden, which is a workplace. Maybe they need to look at those things before they comment on the symmetry. The previous approved application noted that the extension would match Rycroft, but the symmetry of the original pair of cottages would be appreciable even if subsequent extensions do not match. Plans approved for Hunt Cottage are different to that of Rycroft, they're not the same, these are not twin cottages anymore since Rycroft had its extension. It's wider and has differing features. I'd also like to highlight to councillors that less than eighteen months ago, plans were approved and completed with no objections from Buzzbridge Parish Council for a twenty-five-foot barn garage in the front garden of Rycroft, materially altering any symmetry that there was and encroaching on the look and feel of my property. I'd also like to highlight in two thousand and one, full planning permission was given on Hunt Cottage to extend with no conditions and included a front dormer window. My extension remains within the footprint which you approved earlier this year. Finally, the amendments to my minor alterations encompass patio doors at the rear of the property, and for your reference, Rycroft next door also has larger PVC-style ones, as mentioned. The amendment of the dormer is the same height and width, but just slightly deeper. And I think it's important to mention that planning did raise this with me, and when it was flagged, we dropped the ridge height and also met with the planning officers to make sure that it was in keeping with the original plans. Everything else in keeping with plans, I've raised a complaint against parish councillors because I feel that they are using their position. The extension is now nearly completed and enhances the look of the property, is much improved and proportionate to the existing property. Comments from Waverley Planning state they've worked with me in a positive and proactive way, which I confirm is the case. Waverley and planning team have supported my previous application and this amendment, and therefore I see no reason why Waverley councillors should know. Thank you.
Members, councillor Seaborn.
Thank you, chairman. So Hunt Cottage first came before us in July two thousand and seventeen. At that time, we suggested that the plan be withdrawn, modified in consultation with planning officers, and resubmitted in a form that addressed the raised concerns. Plans were duly resubmitted and we considered them at our February two thousand and eighteen meeting, and the application was approved after considerable discussion and on the basis that construction strictly followed the plans accompanying that application. And condition six of that report states, 'The planned numbers to which this permission relates are', and then a series of numbers, 'the development shall be carried out in accordance with the approved plans. No material variation from these plans shall take place unless otherwise first agreed in writing with the local planning authority. Reason being, in order that the development hereby permitted shall be fully implemented in complete accordance with the approved plans, and to accord with policies D1 and D4 of the Waverley Local Plan two thousand and two.' So we've now got Hunt Cottage back with us for retroactive approval of two deviations from the plans that were not to be materially deviated from, except by prior written agreement. So the developer has ignored what they said they would do, what we agreed they could do, and has gone ahead and done what they want to do. Whether this is viewed as making a mockery of our planning system depends on members' interpretation of the word 'material' in the condition. Neither change that we have before us is subtle, so I would argue the changes are material, but obviously I'd be interested to see colleagues' comments on that particular aspect. If we look at SAVE Policy D1, it states, 'The council will have regard to the environmental implications of developments and will promote and encourage enhancement of the environment. Development will not be permitted where it would result in material detriment of the environment by virtue of', and then condition B there is, 'harm to the visual character and distinctiveness of the locality, particularly in respect of the design and scale of the development and its relationship to its surroundings.' So I'd certainly argue that the new front dormer does harm the visual character of the locality by not respecting its relationship to the neighbour. If we look at the second part, sorry, if we look at the first part of SAVE Policy D4, which covers design and layout, 'The council will seek to ensure that development is of a high-quality design which integrates well with the site and complements its surrounding, and in particular, the development should be appropriate to the site in terms of scale, height, form, and critically, appearance. Be it a design and materials which respect the local distinctiveness of the area, or which will otherwise make a positive contribution to the appearance of the area.' So again, I would argue that the new dormer does not integrate well with the site or complements its surroundings, and is not of a design which respects the local distinctiveness of the area. And then I was going to go on and describe the SPD, but councillor English has eloquently gone through pretty much exactly what I was going to say. On just about every count, the new front dormer that we're being asked to approve fails to follow the guidance that we've set out in writing for developments. So for the reasons stated, I will struggle to support this recommendation to approve, but I welcome colleagues' views as to the materiality, because I think that's the critical aspect here, is what we're seeing on that photograph above, material or not. If it's not material, then we probably should approve it. I don't believe it is immaterial. I think what we see there is very, very visible, and I'm not inclined to support it. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Townsend.
Thank you. It's very disappointing that after this came to committee before, that it has changed, especially because of the visibility of the red tile hanging, I think, on the front of the dormer and the increased size of it. To be honest, it is very visible on the front, it does change the look of the cottage. I'm struggling whether or not it is a material change or not, and would welcome what other people have to say, but it is quite, with the red tile hanging, it does rather create a very visual look on that particular dormer area. And however, I am aware that officers have been in conversation with the applicant, and it would be interesting to hear whether or not their opinion on the size, that naught-point-seven metre change in size, what material would be, whether it was one metre, whether it would be a material change, you know, what constitutes, I'd quite like some guidance on that. Thank you.
Chris, you wish to comment.
Thank you, chairman. And just one point of clarification is that we're looking at a application for new planning permission, rather than an application for a non-material amendment, so the assessment isn't whether it's materially different or not, it's whether it's acceptable in its own right or not. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Goodridge.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I actually, because I happened to be in the area last week, actually went to have a look at it from the road. Because I was aware, when we met in February, I thought the application, when we approved it, was very much on balance, and one of the things that persuaded me to vote for this on the last occasion was the symmetry on the front. Not only the roof line, which shows similar treatment, the ridge height, but also the two dormers were looking the same. And I have to say, if this had come before me in February, I don't think I would have approved it. And therefore, looking at it as to whether this application is acceptable in its own right as distinct from the previous one, I think, I find it difficult to support the officer's recommendation. A lot has been said that this dormer does not follow our guidance, and I'd be grateful for officers to comment as to whether or not this dormer does comply with the guidance that Waverley sets out, as to the building of dormers and so on. It does seem to me, having looked at it, that it's very obviously different from next door. And I think it does spoil the effect of this building as a whole by making the dormer bigger, but I'm very happy to listen to what my fellow councillors have to say, but at the moment, I'm not minded to follow the officer's recommendation.
Thank you. Like councillor Goodridge, I drove up there on Monday, actually, to have a look at the thing. I'm really surprised at this, after the attention that we gave it when it came to us first of all, and it was withdrawn and came back to us amended. I was impressed by the standard of the work up there, quite honestly, the stonework to the ground floor is excellent, I mean, you see so much where people just grab any old stone and try and match it in, but they've got proper dressed bargate stone, it's really nice. The north-east elevation isn't quite as shown on the drawings, because the tile hanging comes down further, but I'm just amazed that, having taken all that care with the design and the construction of it, anybody would want to stick anything as ugly as that dormer on the front of their house. It just amazes me, but as you say, we'll wait and see what other people say. Councillor Deeney.
Thank you, chair. In fact, yourself and councillor Goodridge have said a lot of things I was intending to say. You can call me old-fashioned, but I believe we set conditions in these planning meetings, and those conditions should be met. So I find it amazing, and especially having been on the site visit, and we had all the discussions about heights and widths from the boundaries, and we were very specific during our planning meeting, and I absolutely agree with councillor Goodridge saying. It was a very finely balanced debate when we had it, and I think, had that design and that window been put up, I would not have supported it on that day. So I'm very, very disappointed that we're even hearing this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Byam.
Thank you, chairman. Well, so much has been said, which I agree with, with regard to this, in terms of on balance, we decided to agree this application. Let's be clear, we went to a great deal of trouble, and the officers went to a great deal of trouble in getting this right and acceptable. The planning application went through, and that's what they were going to do. The reason it's with us tonight is because they didn't do what they said they were going to do, and the enforcement officer would have visited, and as Mr French said, it's not a change, it's a new application. It's a new application because it is a material change, a significant change. It wouldn't have been required if it wasn't significant, it would have been a simple change. And therefore, I can't see any way of supporting this application as it stands. We would wish it to be completed in the manner that it was originally designed and agreed with by this committee some months ago, and revert back to drawing back that dormer window, and to therefore take away the apron and this distortion of the two dormer windows on the visual aspect of this building.
Thank you. Members, anybody else like to contribute before we... Councillor Goodridge.
Sorry to come back, it was purely on the windows at the back, I fairly feel fairly lukewarm about that, I don't really mind, but we've got to look at the application as a whole, and of course, the application as a whole has two elements, and one element I'm not happy with.
Okay, there's also, I do believe that the approved drawing showed a gable to that dormer, whereas the hip roof obviously is much more in keeping with the house next door. So, members, if we can move to the recommendation, which is that subject to conditions one to two, and informative one, permission be granted, can I have those in favour, please? None. Those against? And abstentions? Two. Could I have a proposal then for an alternative recommendation, please? Councillor Seaborn, we'll leave that one to you.
So thank you, chairman. I think the reasons that I stated when I was talking earlier would be the, so the proposal is that we refuse permission here on the grounds of departure from SAVE Policy D1, which is harm to the visual character and distinctiveness of the area, and particularly its relationship to its surroundings. Failure to adhere to SAVE Policy D4, which covers design and layout, and again, it's that we should be appropriate to the site in terms of its scale, height, form, and particularly appearance, so the emphasis there is on appearance. And officers will have to guide me as to whether we can use guidance, but the fact that the SPD has been almost totally run over should be brought out. The excessive amount of cladding on the front, failure to fully cover the dormer with glazing rather than cladding, and the fact that the number of panes doesn't match the adjacent windows. Hopefully that's enough to be getting on with.
Sorry, I should have asked for a second, first of all. Councillor Goodridge, thank you very much. Officers, have you any comments to make on those reasons for refusal? Okay. Right. Members, so the revised recommendation proposed by councillor Seaborn, seconded by councillor Goodridge, is that permission be refused for the reasons that we've just discussed? All those in favour? And those against? And abstentions? Thank you, sir, that application is refused. If anybody wants to leave the public gallery now, before we move on to the next item, thank you. Right, members, we move on to item B1, reference WA two thousand and eighteen zero nine double seven, Chapelfields Lockwood Road, Allfold, GU six eight H W, and the proposal is for the erection of eight dwellings and a building to provide a mixed-use retail and café, together with associated works, parking area and open space. And Chris is going to present this application to us.
Thank you, chairman. This application seeks planning permission for the erection of eight market dwellings, along with the mixed-use shop and café, ten new parking spaces for Allfold Chapel, and ten additional communal parking spaces. There's also a play area proposed and additions to the Surrey County Council traffic calming measures. There's one update which is contained within the update sheet, includes some additional text which was omitted from the second paragraph of page eighty of the officer's report. This is the location plan for the application site, it's outlined in red here, it's to the west of Lockwood Road. Allfold Chapel is located to the south of the application site, and the site falls within the countryside beyond the Greenbelt. This slide shows an aerial photograph of the This slide shows an aerial photograph of the site showing the site in the context of Allfold Conservation Area, which is the areas that are outlined in green with the application site just to the north-west of the conservation area there. You can also see from this slide the location of a development which is underway, which the county council is undertaking at Linden Farm. This slide actually shows the Linden Farm site in relation to the application site in red to the east there. From this plan as well, you can see the location of Allfold Chapel to the south and Allfold House to the east here, which is a Grade II star listed building. This slide shows the proposed block plan for the site. Plots one to eight are proposed to the south of the site with essential vehicular access. Parking for the dwellings is proposed within the curtilages and to the rear of the plots. The proposal is for three two-bedroom dwellings, three three-bedroom dwellings and two four-bedroom dwellings. These will be provided for a mixture of detached and terrace properties, with the terrace fronting the road here. There are two areas of parking along the southern boundary being proposed, which will provide additional parking for the church and also for residents in the area. These are proposed to be constructed with a reinforced mesh to allow grass to grow through in order to limit the visual impact of those parking areas. The mixed use café shop is proposed to the north of the site, up here. And there's seven spaces proposed adjacent to it. This plan shows the street scene drawings. On the top of this slide, we've got Allfold Chapel in the middle here and then the parking area that we just showed, and then a run of three properties that are being proposed, which are plots two, three and four. The second slide shows the house at plot one, along with the café shop adjacent to it, and the access would run through the middle. So the first two slides are from Lockwood Road. The third slide shows a street scene within the site and these are plots one and five. And these are the floor plans for plots one and five. Plot one is a three-bedroom dwelling and plot five is a two-bedroom property. And these are the elevations for plots one and five. And they would have a maximum ridge height of eight... These two would have a maximum ridge height of 8.4 metres. And this is the floor plan for plots two, three and four, which are the units that place onto the road. And the elevations for those properties. The tallest of these has a maximum ridge height of 9.3 metres. And this shows the floor plans and the elevations for one of the detached properties, which is plots... Well, two of the detached properties which are plots six and seven. And this is the floor plan at elevation for plot eight, which is a two-storey detached dwelling. This is the floor plan for the proposed shop café. On the ground floor would be the space for the café and shop. You can see it down on the bottom of the slide. And the first floor would be used as ancillary space for things such as storage, staff facilities, so it wouldn't be used as additional space for customers of the shop or café. This plan shows the additions proposed to the traffic calming measures, which includes a raised table in the centre here. And also some kind of raised cushions in order to slow traffic along the road. These are some photographs of the site. The photograph on the left-hand side shows the Allfold Chapel. Footpath runs between the chapel and the application site. Then the application site is on the right-hand side there. You can see the Surrey County Council Linden Farm development set further from the road frontage, tops of the roofs, you can see from there. And the photograph on the right-hand side is taken from a bit further along that road looking straight in to the application site. The photograph on the left is taken with the back to the application site looking towards where the new access would go. And the photograph on the right is taken from the northern side of the front boundary of the application site looking towards Allfold Chapel. This slide shows some of the examples of dwellings within the conservation area to the south. You can see there's a mixture of designs. This slide splits the determining issues into matters of principle and technical opinion and matters of judgment. The matters of principle and technical opinion are the principle of development, the impact on parking, access and highway safety, the loss of agricultural land and any effects on ecology and biodiversity. The matters of planning judgment relate to the impact on the character and beauty of the countryside, the impact on the setting of the conservation area and the weight given to any public benefits which are being proposed. For the reasons set out in the officer's report, the application is recommended for refusal. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Chris. Members, councillor Dinas.
Thank you, Chair. As the ward member for Allfold, I think it's been fair to say that Allfold has been bombarded by development, which has given the village absolutely no benefit. I think we've had development in Allfold that's inappropriate and insensitive as well. The application tonight, in some ways, is the hardest one I've had to consider, but in some ways the easiest. Representing community is difficult as often residents will have different opinions on applications. This application is generally supported by the community and the parish, and you'll see quite a substantial submission by the parish in support. So in summary tonight, we have to judge whether the benefits outweigh the harm. This application is the first Allfold application that actually will deliver, not promise, some real benefits. What does this deliver? The traffic calming measures, which Mr French has just mentioned. Couple of years ago, there was a tragic accident where a woman lost her life at this location. Despite this tragic death, nothing has changed. Through a 106 agreement, road safety improvements can be made. I think also from the diagram you can see it's a fairly low density development. It provides car parking for the chapel and for use by the residents of Lockwood Road, who are fed up with their cars being damaged and having their wing mirrors being knocked off on a regular basis. It will create a village green setting and a shop divide goods within walking distance rather than driving to Cranley. I'm sure my colleagues from Cranley would be pleased about that. The officer's report is very detailed, with extensive history of applications and appeals. I'm grateful to Nicola Martin for her hard work on this. The report quotes extracts from appeals and it's hard to argue some of the points from this. As I've already said, it is a judgment whether the benefits outweigh the harm. There are considerable benefits and for me, compared to the other recent applications which offer nothing, this does and is welcome. We recently considered and refused an application on the opposite side of the road on Lockwood Road. And the question is, what did that one offer? No contributions, no car parking, in fact, nothing at all. This is very different. Additionally, Linden Farm does put a different perspective on this. Surrey County Council have built a number of accommodation blocks for adult social care. This application will infill the area, but will be far more pleasing to the eye than the Linden Farm. At the start, I said it would be the hardest decision, but also the simplest. The hardest part is I've been very vocal in planning that our policy should be adhered to, banging on that we have policies in part one of the local plan for a reason. That is correct and I will continue to do so. The simplest part is I can see the benefits of this scheme, which in my judgment will outweigh the harm. I'll leave it at that stage, Chair, Chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Goodridge.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, it is a difficult one and one has to obviously take into account on the planning side, the inspector's decision relating to the application of 2014. And one is looking, I'm looking at particularly on page 68, which highlights the differences between the two proposals. And whether the benefits will necessarily be permanent or not. Clearly, the 106 to the highway would be permanent. The 2014 application would have had three affordable housing, which would have been permanent. And we are dealing with slightly less dwellings than before, but again, the inspector's decision made it clear that any development here is contrary to policy and it's whether there are exceptional circumstances in effect to overturn our policy. I mean, the big carrot that's being submitted in this application is the café shop. What happens when the shop and oblique café becomes not viable? I can just see us coming back in a year or two or three or four years' time to say that it's not viable for this shop to continue or it's not used enough as a café and we'd now like to convert that building into more housing. And therefore, I don't think the café shop is necessarily permanent. You can put a condition on that it will be used only for, but this is the carrot that we're being... It's being dangled at us to grant this permission contrary to policy. I don't think this is a permanent necessarily benefit and could be only temporary. I would like it to be a success, but I can't see that it would necessarily be permanent and therefore, as things stand at the moment, I'm minded to go along with the officer's recommendation.
Thank you. Councillor Townsend.
Thank you. Can I just confirm, which will be fine by a nod at the head, that this is a full application? Yes, it is. What I find is that it's quite difficult because there is very little detail on the actual plans for the houses, as in measurements, the floor spaces. I'm not sure whether they meet, I don't think, technical space standards. I can't really... I can see that there are benefits to the community and I can see from the drawings the actual sort of visual representations, which are very lovely drawings. However, I find it very difficult on the detail to make a decision, which is a real shame. I can't, I'm not really sure how the car park is accessed, to be honest, and I'm not really sure how big the houses are. So I can see that there would be some benefits. I also am concerned that the café shop, with the number of parking spaces that it's got, makes it slightly unviable and could cause traffic parking on the access road. So I think that at this moment in time, I'm just lacking the detail to really be able to come to perhaps the decision at this stage. So I feel as if I would support the officer's decision because I haven't got the detail to make an alternative decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councillor Vorjeshevsky.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm going to start with a point that councillor Dinas made and maybe shock many of my colleagues in this chamber this evening. You mentioned about banging on about planning in Allfold and all the rest of it and as your predecessor to being Allfold ward member for a while, I know this site very well. And nobody, other than councillor Dinas and I and this Townsend and one or two others, have thrown their toys further than I have. And I can't believe actually that, given that this is a green space and it's got a long and chequered history, that actually I think things have changed. I actually think what we have before us this evening is something that does enhance the village, that does offer something back, that has got a history of being a good neighbour and simply because of its position in the village has been refused permissions in the past. And I do think things have changed and moved on. And whilst exceptional circumstances can be viewed in many different ways, shapes and forms, I think Surrey County Council has changed that with what it's actually done on the neighbouring site. So I never thought I'd say this, but I am minded not to go along with the officer's decision because seeing the praises of Allfold, this is exactly the kind of development they need. It's in the right end of the village, it is appropriate. I actually love the idea of the café. I know we can't say that things are going to be viable and sustainable in the future to come, but I've only got to look at their shop and how well their shop has done. And if anyone's ever been there, they'll know it's something like taken from a scene out of Open All Hours. But it is well supported by the village and I think the village would support this. I think it's in the right place and I think it's time for change. So I'm going to rein in my toys and on this particular occasion, I'm going to say that I would not support the officer's recommendation because I think this is an opportunity to be fair to the village and give something back which is appropriate and in keeping and that offers something to the village which is sustainable, especially in terms of highways. Once again, Chairman, thank you for your indulgence and thank you for listening.
Thank you. My problem with this is that, councillor Vorjeshevsky, you've put a little worm inside my head from a previous comment on an application, that if we approve this, it's just the thin end of the wedge and they'll be back to us for more and more, as they've already tried for more beforehand. And I'm also a bit suspicious of this café shop, which is pretty tall and it has this huge storage space over the top, but I can't see that any café or shop would need that much and it just... You see, you've got me doubting everybody now, but never mind, we will move on. Did you wish to come back?
I would, if I may, Chairman. I take your point, I think it's very valid, it's very relevant, but I think unlike before, this site can accommodate. And in the past, we've seen that the history goes back to the 1980s and there's been reports from inspectors, it highlights some of the difficulties there. But I think even if in the future things were to change, this site can accommodate those changes. But I think for here and now, looking at the application on its own merits, I think there is mileage here to make exceptional circumstances apply because Surrey County Council in isolation changed all of that. Thank you again, Chairman.
Thank you. Chris, you wish to comment?
Thank you, Chairman. Just a couple of points of clarification. We've got page 53 does have the heights of the dwellings, so if there are some queries about heights of the dwellings, those are there. The tallest is showing at 9.3 metres. The other point of clarification is page 77 of the report. The case officer has reviewed the proposal in terms of the nationally described space standards. Thank you, Chairman.
And do they comply?
Yes.
I'm just looking on page 77.
Page 77, it's the second to last paragraph. It says how they meet the nationally described space.
Thank you very much, Chris. Thank you for that. Councillor Gray.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I've listened very carefully to my colleagues. I'm pleased especially about the comments that councillors who know it better than I do, who said it will enhance the village. I'm also very impressed with the way they've gone about the design. To me, they put a lot of effort into it. They put a lot of effort to make it fit in with its surroundings. I'm a bit disappointed about the shop, the transient nature of the shop. Well, certainly without this application, there'll be no chance to have a shop. Its value has got to be judged by the village in terms of having it. There's no reason why it shouldn't be viable if it's used. I don't think I can particularly sit here and say I don't like it because it might fail. On that basis, there's an awful lot of things shouldn't be approved around the place, including some of our high streets. But I think this is a good plan. But I think this is a good plan. I really take a little bit of a lead from the people who know the area, and I'm minded to go against the officer's recommendation and allow this to go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Jeanette Stennett.
Thank you. I am in total agreement with councillors Vorjesewski and Gray and Deenis. I would say to other councillors who have spoken that we shouldn't get hooked up on the café. For me, this is more about opening up the village and making it more of a heart, giving it more of a community. And the other benefit will be the traffic. Orfold is built on a hill. We have a church at the bottom and a chapel at the top. And if you look at the very nice photographs that were put up of the people who park their cars outside their properties from the top to the bottom, you will see that it looks awfully flat. But it's not flat at all, and it is impossible to go from the bottom of the hill to the top of the hill without extreme caution. It looks very flat there, doesn't it? But one car becomes 10 or 15 cars at certain times of the day, and you have to proceed on the wrong side of the road up to the corner where the chapel is, which is on a bend, which is where the unfortunate lady was killed a couple of years ago. It would be very helpful to the village of Orfold to have somewhere to park their cars. The houses that are being proposed on this site are very much in keeping with those that are near the chapel. They look very similar. If you go back to the pictures of the houses proposed. They look very much like those that are between the shop and the chapel. They're not large houses, they're a nice size for a young family or for an older couple wishing to downsize. Orfold is, historically, two villages. There's Orfold Crossways and there's Orfold Village. Orfold Village no longer has a pub. Orfold Crossways still does, at the end of the entrance to Dunstford Aerodrome. But Orfold has lost a bakery, it's lost a garage, it's lost a restaurant. It had a thriving restaurant back in the 50s, 60s and 70s called Chezon, which was famous all over the place. Famous people used to come down to eat at the French restaurant. Before that, there was a restaurant, a little café, which was beside the road on the 281 that people would stop for baked beans on toast or a cup of tea in a rock bun. Orfold has been a very thriving community, and we tend to forget that we have passed approval for houses in Orfold. And approval for a large development in Dunstford is now on its way. And the people who live just across the border in East Sussex will be going up and down to Cranley, Guildford, Horsham, through the village. And this application will help the people of Orfold with the problems with their traffic going up and down and through the village itself. It's a very long string of a village, and this, for me, is ideal. So I certainly won't be supporting the officers tonight. I should be voting for it.
Thank you. councillor Townsend, you wish to come back?
Yes. Thank you for the confirmation of the technical space standards. When I was referring to the detail, I know we've been caught short on a couple of applications where we don't know what the finished ridge height is when it's actually on the ground. You know, as much as we measure from the bottom of the house up to the top, it's quite key to know actually what the finished ridge height would be. However, can we go back to the layout, actually, of the site, please? So from that layout, and I apologise if this is in the report, but are we certain that all these houses can be accessed for bin collection? Is that what the little, the cars are on there? And also, what is the access point to the parking, please, for the chapel? Because I'm a little bit confused where that actually comes in, if you could confirm that. And I know that, you know, I'm halfway, I'm totally undecided at this particular moment in time. But I'm concerned, you know, councillor Stennett listing all the different bakeries and the shop and etcetera which have been lost, you know, doesn't really make an argument for putting perhaps a shop there. And my concern is the number of spaces. If people are passing and wanting to pop in, and there's only five spaces, extra spaces there, if that is enough, or would hinder this particular café from becoming a viable place? Anyway, sorry to ask quite a few questions, but could answer perhaps if the access for the getting rid of the bins and also the access to the parking area for the chapel, please? Thank you.
Chris, can you answer those?
Thank you, Chairman. In terms of the access for the parking spaces for the chapel, it would be through the access into the site. So there's not a separate vehicular access being proposed. The officer's report does refer to a condition being included on any grant of permission in terms of the details of bin and cycle storage arrangements. Thank you, Chairman.
I think your question was about the bin lorries, wasn't it? I think if you look at that, at the top where the road does a Y, that's indicative of the sweatpath analysis, and also down the bottom, where it goes into the road into the parking space. Okay, thank you. councillor Stuart Stennett.
Thank you, Chairman. With the bin lorries, I can assist you there, that's my speciality. Rear steer on all these bin lorries today, well, they will go around that road quite easily. Parking spaces in front of the café there, I think I can count, although my eyesight's not as good as it was, nine, is that right? And then you've got nine on 20 for the chapel. So that, I think, is a plus. I also agree with what Kevin Deenis has said about the, it will be the help with the heart of the village, and it will be a great improvement to the village, and it also will give them a shop which they badly need. I would also like to point out with regards to the safety of the road, debated in this chamber many years ago, one of those houses coming up the hill on the left-hand side was made to put a turntable in the front of the house, so that when the car was parked, the owner could push the turntable round. It was deemed that dangerous. And councillor Deenis is saying how much safer this is going to make it. I wholeheartedly agree. And I had a terrible accident on that road many years ago, and I think anything that saves lives and makes it safer, I passionately say, yes, let's do it. The money's there, and let's support it. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Bayon.
Thank you, Chairman. Well, first of all, the officer's recommendation is on balance. Secondly, the application is supported strongly by the parish council and the community. Thirdly, since any other application come forward, the Surrey County Council development, which didn't have to come through this authority for planning approval, has been approved and it's being built, as I understand. And that changes the whole concept of that area. The fact that we haven't got a ribbon development along the road, but we've got a backland or development with a nice village green setting, etcetera, really makes it a very attractive alternative to other developments and creates what the village seemed to approve. I can't remember the last time we actually had Orfold Parish Council agree to anything and approve. But perhaps they have, and I've missed it, maybe in small things. But nevertheless, they are supportive of this, and therefore, perhaps reluctantly, I will disagree with the officers, but they did say on balance. And I'm sitting on the other end of the seesaw.
Thank you. councillor Seaborn.
Thank you, Chairman. Councillor Bayon and I share the same ward, and he's more or less said exactly what I was going to say. I was going to focus on the high level of local approval and the low level of objection. It's very unusual to have something put in front of you where you can tick one, two, three benefits straight off, the traffic calming, the parking, and potentially the café. You know, there's normally two more than we'd expect to get, and that's really good. Very impressed with the street scenes. Of course, that's down to a good artist, but it looks like it has always been there. So this should fit in really well. And the other key point for me is the Linden Farm development. That has changed things since the last time. So I've only echoed what everyone else has said, but I am very minded to go with the general tenure to support this application and go against the officer's recommendation. Thank you.
councillor Henry.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm rather excited by this application. It's really nice to see some real benefits coming into the villagers. I do know this particular plot, and the fact that Surrey County Council are already there and have started their work on this, this is really going to tidy and finish it off, isn't it? And to have something right into the centre of the village, and to give the traffic calming which Orfold so desperately needs, and also bring the whole of the village together. We might have our various concerns about the shop, but let's have a go at it. The accommodation, the dwelling, they're not big places. They're places for small families, people that are downsizing. Yes, perhaps the artists had a rather fluid pen, but it does look good. It does look like the village, it doesn't look alien. And after that last application, no, shut up, Valerie. So I think there are a raft of benefits that will benefit the whole of the community. You've got the church people, you've got the shop. Where do you go to shop in Orfold? You probably go up to the, if you go any place, you probably go up to the petrol filling station. Wouldn't it be wonderful to have someplace in the middle of the village which you can actually walk to? I think it's very exciting, and the development of producing a new state-of-the-art village green. I mean, that's very exciting as well. So I think there are a lot of beneficiaries that can come on board with this. And as I say, I'm quite excited by the prospect. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, shall we move to the recommendation? And the recommendation is that permission be refused for reasons 1 to 6 and informatives 1 to 2 set out in the report. Can I have all those in favour of that recommendation?
One, two.
And against?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten.
So can I have a proper, sorry? Oh, there are no abstentions, aren't there? Can I have a recommendation for an alternative recommendation, please? councillor Deenis.
Yes, my recommendation is that we approve the application, and I'm sure I'll have a second there.
councillor Vorjesewski, second. And reasons for the approval?
I think, as I said before, it's the benefits to the community. It's been mentioned, the road calming measures, the fact that it provides a community facility and a village green area. I think all the reasons that we've put forward.
Thank you, officers. Any comments to make on reasons for refusal? Approval, sorry. No, okay. So, members, the revised recommendation, sorry? Are you happy for us to leave the conditions to the officers, or would you want?
Chair, can I just make a suggestion? I've sort of tried to look at the conditions that I would expect as a ward member to be suitable. And if I just go through the maybe, it'd be helpful for Mr French just to take a note of the themes. Obviously, numbering of plans, materials, construction management plan, a lighting plan, a site management plan, electric charging points, landscaping ecology plan, and we'll include the badger sets, the proposed vehicular access, parking and bikes, the traffic calming. I would suggest that maybe the retail café have in restricted juice. So that might take some of the concerns, so we put a condition on that. Waste, fowl, sewage, suds and surface water, these are our normal ones that we've put. An archaeological survey, which has been mentioned within the report, and water pressure and flow. And I'm sure the officers will have comments about the 106 and any pre-commencement conditions. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, I think we'll also need a condition regarding the section 106 money, won't we? If you want your traffic calming, which would mean that we'll have to have a second recommendation in case they don't complete the section 106. Beth?
Yes, Chairman. Also, based on my briefing note that I circulated earlier today, we'll also need a proviso that the applicant provides written agreement to any pre-commencement conditions as well. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. So, Beth, Chris, are you happy with those conditions that councillor Deenis ran through? Yep, plus the section 106 and the pre-commencement. So, members, the revised recommendation proposed by councillor Deenis, seconded by councillor Vorjesewski, is that approval be granted for this, subject to the conditions we've just discussed. All those in favour of the revised recommendation, please? And those against? Abstention? So that application is approved, and we have no reason to exclude press or public. So I will close the meeting.